It's eight thirty.
Good morning, sir.
It's eight thirty, the appointed time for the month of the meeting of the County Commission to convene, and this time I will call the meeting to order. We have a quorum present, all five commissioners are here. At this time, we'll have an invocation, and I'm going to ask Mr. Elmore to lead us in the invocation, then we'll have the pleasure, ladies.
Let us pray. Our gracious heaven, Father, thank you for all the men and blessing you allow to enjoy each day, our Father. Thank you for waking us up this morning, our Father. Our Father, we ask to ask you to bless the men and women overseas, fight for freedom, our Father. Rested leaders of this country, Lord of the season, they may be pleasing to you, our Father. We ask to ask you this morning, as we gather here, to conduct county business, our Father, everything be conducted in a manner you be pleasing to all, our Father, and we ask to ask you to guide our minds and our hearts, our Fathers, and ask you forgive us when we fail you. We ask all this in Christ's name, amen.
One minute, our pleasure, ladies.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting today, and thank you for your participation. We are welcoming the news media to help get the public informed as to what's going on with county business. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Terrence Second.
May I make a motion?
Mr. Northerly made a motion to adopt the official agenda, and you're second, Mr.?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye. Well, let's review this. Mr. Northerly, did you make a motion to adopt the official agenda?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Did, Mr. Terrence, did you second?
No, sir.
Do I have a second? There being no second, then this meeting will be adjourned.
We have, like Mr. Terrence had a...
I move to adopt the agenda, but I want the following changes made in it, and that's to move item number sixteen, consider lease of Covenant Center Arena to travel the LLC to item number one under the new business.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. I recognize Mr. Northerly first, and his motion takes precedent over your motion. We have to dispose of that motion before we can go forward.
He withdrew.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
Mr. Northerly has withdrawn his motion. Now, we entertain a motion for the official agenda as presented, or if you would like to have a motion to make changes, we'll do that.
I make a motion, Chairman, make some changes.
What changes do you want?
Moving item sixteen up, Commissioner Terrence said up the one, two, whichever one on agenda there, sir.
Okay. As I understand the motion, the official agenda would change to place item sixteen as the first order of business under new business. Are there any others to the motion? Do we have a second?
Second. Is that what we're waiting on?
Yes.
Well, I'm second, I'm second.
That's the normal procedure, you have a second.
You make yourself clear, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's then come upon you to follow the procedures we've set out in the procedures for conducting the meeting. We have a motion and a second to move item sixteen to number one under new business, and the rest of them would follow in that order. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we will hear comments from our public officials, and at this time, I'd like to recognize our representative, the Honorable Mike Jones, to say a few words.
I appreciate it. I had a, I was just gonna visit today, I had a, I had a number of phone calls over the last forty-eight hours, and, and so I drove back from Montgomery this morning, just to see how things were going here, learn what I could learn, and then I'll be driving back for some meetings in Montgomery later today, but I think it's the first time I've been to one of these meetings quite some time, so I was kinda looking forward to seeing how y'all working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the job you're doing in Montgomery for us. Next, I'll recognize our sheriff, Mr. Dennis Meeks, would you like to say anything?
I don't have anything this time.
I believe that's all of our elected officials. Okay. At this time, we'll have a period of comments from citizens at this time. The first one is Mr. Michael Holabah, is he here? He's not here, then we will move on.
That, that item been taken care of, Chairman.
Next, for public comment, is the individuals who wish to comment on the Covenant Center Arena lease, at this time, I'm gonna call Sandy Wiggins, is she here? Please, as a matter of housekeeping, we want everyone to come to the mic.
Mr. Chairman, are there aware of the three-minute time limit?
The three-minute time limit is in the public hearing, and this is not a public hearing.
Okay, I represent the National Barrel Horse Association, who holds shows here in Andalusia. Up until five years ago, we held our state show here. Our economic impact on this facility was almost a million dollars within the period of time that we've been here. Over the last five years, we've not used or had the facility at our use for the show. It's not a personal vendetta against anybody to use this arena, it's just economic, good business for this county. If we're paying for the arena, then the citizens should be able to see some benefit from it. That's my only contention in this, is we need to be able to have more things there that helps bring money back into this county, if the citizens of this county is gonna pay for that arena. We need to be able to see these three-day shows that stay here. We have seven three-day shows that we know of, that have pulled out in the last five years, who will come back, if we can get it where they will be able to financially be able to come back, and that's, you know, what our concern is. It's not that we're wanting to say that you can't lease it to anybody, it would be better if the county and the city could work together to make this a facility for everybody, that would make it possible for all of us to be able to use it.
Thank you. Any comments? Next, I will call on Ms. Susan Musgrove with the Covenant County 4H Midnight Riders. She's not here. The next person on the agenda is Ms. Debbie James with a local business touch of country. Ms. James?
How are y'all today? Again, this is not a personal vendetta against anyone, it's about the arena, it's about the, the county people who have paid taxes for the arena, the other people and the donations. I'm just a small business, I know every one of y'all in here, it's not a personal vendetta against anything. A lot of the citizens in the community come to me because I have a western store, my western store is connected to that facility. I don't have a hot dog stand, so I probably wouldn't come up here and stand here today, wouldn't bother me. I represent the community of equine people. We have a lot of people, associations, that do not come. For what other reason, I don't know every reason, there are some that, because of the amount of money that it costs, I understand that you have to pay for the facility, I understand you have to pay people to tend to it, we know that. We would wish that the community, be it the city and the county, could somehow or other come together, or the individual who does have it, it's not a vendetta against Mr. Bullard whatsoever, no matter who has the arena. We would like, the community would like the people to come together so that we could have more things out there. It benefits me, yes, for there are things to go on out there, but it also benefits the city, it benefits the county. Unfortunately, I don't think that the, the city does take in more taxes on revenue than anybody else. Last year, that we were, the city went up a point and a half in taxes, so now we're paying three and a half percent. Why can't something come together, why can't people come together? We, as citizens, have sat here and voted for y'all. We would like for people to try to come together and understand our feelings, not just one person's feelings, not just one group's feelings, but everybody. Let the people come together. It's hard for me to stand up here and be against anybody, because I'm not, and I don't want anybody to think that. We have a lot at stake here, too, because we live here. I moved here fifteen years ago, and my dad helped me start that business. I started because I loved Kent Covenant County, I wanted to be with my family, and that's kinda the business that I'm in. If nothing goes on out there, it doesn't help my business, it doesn't help our gas stations, it doesn't help our hotels, it doesn't help our tire places, it doesn't help our feed stores. The more we have come in here helps. When a family comes here to arena to have a barrel race or a horse show, they're here two or three days. They come as four, they don't come as one to come to a baseball game, or two, they come as four, you're spending four times the money for four days in our community. I would wish that everybody would really kinda take in, in concern and think about this in a little longer term. I don't think something has to jump out there today and, and make a decision. I don't think all of y'all need to make a decision, I think it needs to have a little more discussion, or a little more come together. If, if things could just come together and work for everybody, instead of just benefiting a certain few, I think is what everybody, the horse people, the equine, a lot of other people are asking to be done. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Any comments? This time, I'll call on Ms. Becky Corson.
Good morning. I'm Becky Corson, I'm a resident of Andalusia, and speaking on behalf of some of the businesses, and as a concerned taxpayer, who loves our town and truly want it to be a thriving, growing city. The Covenant Arena, the original purpose, as I understand and documented in the county records, was to help promote and support the agricultural heritage in Covenant County. I don't believe that's being done, that's my opinion. The agriculture and forestry industry is rated second in the top industry groups for Covington County, according to recent statistics from the State of Alabama Agribusiness Council. This represents a significant segment of what defines our county. I think that we are losing a lot of business, because bookings are shrinking from the arena in the past two to three years, and all of this negatively impacts the business community, and in turn, this means reduction in sales tax, it's a chain effect, all the way down to the small business owner. Equine events generate millions of dollars in the business community all across the county, as people come into the area. From Florida, they'll come through Florella, you know, they come down I-65, the, all the different roads coming in, so all of the county benefits, as they stop for gas, restaurants, and in town, they spend money at every segment of business. It's probably the biggest cross-section of business activity you can generate, because they're stopping at the grocery store, they're going to the pharmacy, they're going to the farm stores, the ag, the retail stores, staying at all our hotels. Story of, just happened in January, we had a team pinning event, we, I was not, I just was a participant, at a team pinning event in January, and one of the residents from North Carolina happened to be in town, decided he would go look at horse trailers. I understand he went up Andalusia Ford and bought a fifty-five thousand dollar horse trailer. That is not the unusual of what happens when these folks come to town at these events and stay three, four days. They shop, they buy. This is what keeps our retail and our industry, whether it be any form of business, keep that circle going, money coming into the community. An arena such as ours is a multi-purpose facility and goes beyond horse events, I know you hear a lot more about that, but, you know, livestock shows, 4H or FHA events, concerts, festivals, dog shows, I mean, you can have an unlimited amount of activity there, if it is well-planned and carried out. But the reason you hear so much about horse events, they generate more money to the community and to the arena than any other event you can put on, because they rent every aspect of the facility, the stalls, the RV parking spaces, and the arena. And in turn, this generates more money. The arena is just another aspect of a quality of life, just like we budget contributions for ballparks, recreation, tourism, and it's an investment in the quality of life for our youth and residents. Yes, it does represent a larger budget, and I think that's where we probably have the biggest concern, is the budget, but it generates more money. Millions of dollars a year come into businesses and raises more sales tax collections for the benefit of the city and county budget, and usually even results in higher real estate tax base over time, as people locate their businesses here, because we're a thriving community. But consider for a moment that you already have the arena, the debt is already in the budget, you have the opportunity to increase your sales tax collections, which will boost your budget income. You don't have to go out of the arena, out of the area to solicit new businesses, not that you don't need to still keep doing that, but I'm saying, this is already one form of business that's already here. You know, you don't have to go out of the area to court new business at the moment, if you focus on this as well. I mean, we already got businesses here that could continue to thrive and grow, if we grow the arena. You grow the arena, you grow your businesses that are already here, invested in the community. We need a new approach to the arena, and I urge the commissioners to talk to other cities with arena managers around the state, around nearby states. The managers I've talked to between Alabama and Mississippi, think the best thing ever happened to their community was having an arena. It raises their tax base, because businesses thrive, the real estate tax base goes up, their sales tax collections go up. It's just another form of their quality of life benefit to the residents, and it's a community endeavor, just like you contribute to tourism, ballparks, and recreation. It raises the quality of life for all of the residents, whether you're young or old, and most of the time, these events are free. So it is a great opportunity for people in today's times, on tighter money, to have a opportunity for some entertainment. But I just encourage you to look at all the aspects of this for the benefit of the citizens and the well-being of the quality of life for our area. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll call on Dr. Lynn Hall.
Okay. Good morning to the County Commission, I want to thank you for the opportunity of letting us voice our opinion and hear what we have to say. I am, I'm Dr. Lynn Hall, I'm a practicing large animal veterinarian in Andalusia. We, my family and I moved here about seven years ago, and have been involved in the agricultural aspect, and practicing large animal medicine, and I have two children, this is my daughter, she participates in quarter horse shows, in rodeos, and we have enjoyed the facility at the arena for the time that we've been here. But my purpose today in coming to you is to ask you to please hold off, table this Covington Arena until maybe the Kiwanis and the mayor and the other advisors for the city can talk to y'all, to try to reach some kind of budget, or a sharing of the bills for the arena, so it can stay in the public or in the county's hands, so we can afford to have events out there, 'cause to my understanding, when it was built, it was for agricultural industry, and the equine events make up most of that, and make a lot of money for this county. So what I'm asking today from you all is to wait until some kind of discussion can be had with the city and the Kiwanis, to see if maybe we can work this deal out. I also, there's several reasons that I have listed here. That Covington facility is one of the premier places in the state that we have, there's, there's a few places that we have to go to have these equine events, but ours, we like to brag on ours, and we had our horse shows here, we like to brag on, well, we got a nice place, and everybody wants to come, and we have people coming from all over, Georgia, Florida, Mississippi, Tennessee, we had, and we had a good attendance, because they love this facility, it's a great facility, and I just want to stress that, and I'm, I'm glad that y'all built it, 'cause we have really enjoyed it, but I'd like to see it continue to be used like it was previously. The, we, I have a few things here listed that I may, my daughter may, because she writes better than I do, but anyway, the commissioners need to see this. These are, these are, can I say that? These are events that we've lost in the last five years at the arena, okay? The first one is Alabama Quarter Horse Association Shows, that's what we are involved in, and I, I'm a previous youth advisor for the state in, in Alabama Quarter Horse Association, we had two events here every year, and we don't have them anymore. All right, the first one was, this stands for the Youth Association, Alabama Quarter Horse Youth Association. This was a fundraiser for our kids in the state, so they could do other things, like, there's a leadership conference that the American Quarter Horse Association has, where the kids go to Amarillo, Texas, and spend three days in leadership conferences, trying to make kids better leaders, so they can do things like you do, run for office, like Mr. Jones, things like that, that's what we're trying to promote. All right, the economic impact benefit from this area on this show, if we lost last year that went to Montgomery, is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's the economic impact of that one horse show. It's a three-day show. Kim is passing all y'all out a copy of the economic impact formula from the American Quarter Horse Association Business Office, that comes directly from the business office of the American Quarter Horse Association. There's a formula on there, how they figure from every horse show, what the economic impact is for every horse show in your area, okay? And you can, I'm, I'm sure y'all able to read all that, so I don't need to do that for you, but this is, and this, the second show is a show that we could've got, but we didn't, and this Memorial Day weekend, Montgomery got it as well, and it's one point eight million dollars, okay? That's what we missed. All right, there's a, that was a, it was a four-day show, so it had more money in it. This, the last, the last number I have here, we lost the Arabian show, too, the Arabian Horse Show Association was here for several years, because I was the vet at the show, and they don't pay me near as much money as they spend on economic impact, but anyway, Arabian Horse Show is gone as well, they moved to Rainsville. Rainsville has a nice facility, we've been there to show, they have a nice facility, but it's not near as nice as what we have. But anyway, the Arabians, they moved their show to Rainsville, and I talked with the lady in the Alabama Arabian Association, and her calculations at two hundred and twenty-five horses, that's what we missed with their show, every year, we're missing that, y'all are missing that, we're missing that. Okay. We also lost the Alabama Hundred Jumper Show, we don't have it anymore, it's gone. We don't have the, as Sandy mentioned, the MBHA, they're gone. The Pacifico Horse Association, they're gone, we missed that show, too. So the Tarragon Rodeo is gone, because they can't show a profit anymore. The 4H events, they can't, they can't afford, they can't afford to pay what the arena charges for all 4H kids, can't use it, 'cause they can't afford it, and they, they're now going to Baker, Florida, to have their clinics and their little events, so they have to move to Baker where they can afford it. NCHA, that's National Cutting Horse Association, they don't have events here anymore, they're gone. The, and the Alabama Junior High Rodeo Finals that were here, they're gone, they're, they're in Pensacola, Florida now, but they have to find someplace they can afford to have their finals. But anyway, the Tennessee Walking Horse Show that the Pilot Club has, I spoke to the lady that, that's running that show, I don't want to say that money. The Pilot Club, Tennessee Walking Horse Association, I talked to the lady that runs that show, she said if they don't, they broke even last year, if they don't do it this year and make some money, they're gonna be gone, that's it, they can't afford it anymore. Okay. Now that it's all about the money, as my husband says, it's always about the money. So, I don't know if y'all had an opportunity to read the Andalusia Star News Saturday, but just in case you didn't, I went and spent my last two dollars, bought all the newspapers that I could buy, but as you see, on the front page of the Andalusia Star News, it's all about the money. It's all about the economic impact of people in the tourism business, and in the motel business, and in the restaurant business, and if you haven't read that article, I would encourage you to read it, because it does talk to us about the money. How much money the motel, how much the motels are coming in, how much the restaurant business is making, and I don't know how you can deny the fact that the money that we've lost, I mean, that's, that's a no-brainer, and I understand, when, when the arena first, when we first came here, and I signed a contract with Tony to rent that arena, it was a good deal, it was not very expensive, and I understand that, it wasn't, it probably wasn't as expensive as it should've been, but all I had to do was show him some of those kids' faces, and they, he gave me one night for a, you know, anyway, I understand that things have gone up, I understand it has to be more expensive than it was when it started, and we can deal with that, but the way it is now, it's exorbitant, and there's no way we can have a horse show and come out, and, and I just, I want to just encourage you to please, please consider waiting until there can be some kind of discussion with the city and the Kiwanis, to see if we can make that facility even a better facility, 'cause it's like Becky said, there's a lot of things we haven't tapped into. The Alabama Horse Council, they're even looking for a new place, because Montgomery's so outdated, and they're, they're hunting, and they would, you know, they would show some interest, but we have to make it amiable towards everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all the person who notified us, they want to be on the agenda for public comments, we thank you for your comments, I think you make some very good points, and I think it is a economic item to be considered, no matter who operates the facility. At this time, we will go into old business, we have one item, and that's the bid that we've received for the jail addition, discussing grinder pump options. Discuss the grinder pump options. At this time, I will entertain a motion based on the advice of our council.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we reject all bids on the jail based on the decision of our council.
I'll cycle that.
Have a cycle. Any discussion?
Do we need to go ahead and discuss the grinder pump issue since it's on this?
That'd be separate, separate issue. The issue right now is to reject all bids and that's a motion and a cycle to that effect. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none motion, uh, carried unanimously. The grinder pump options, uh, that grinder pump was in the original bid. Whether it would be in the next bid or not will be dependent on information that we may obtain to work with the city of Andalusia. And I'll ask, uh, Mr. Kenny to, he was going, he was going to be the point man on this and obtain information for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, real briefly, I did speak with the city. They are, they have, I spoke with them Thursday, uh, after me and you spoke, I spoke with them Thursday and they were supposed to get back with me with some vendors and people that, uh, could do this type of work for us. They have not gotten back with me. Um, I did take it upon myself to call a, a local plumber electrician that has done this, um, at some Yip and Go stores in the past. Um, and, uh, that bid estimate is in your packet somewhere. Uh, it, it shows what it would cost, about what it would cost to have a grinder pump, uh, put it to jail.
So that, that's an item that's for the commission to decide whether or not they want to re, we also need action whether or not to rebid this project. The two items that were in the original bid that was of, uh, uh, factoring and rejecting the bid is a, two vendors were named and according to the state, uh, building commission, that cannot be in there. So that caused that bid to be, uh, wrong, could not meet state law. The question now is, does the commission wish to rebid the project, project with the correct information?
Yes, sir. I would make a motion that we, at the earliest time from the architects and the corrections can be made, anything to rebid the petition to the jail, the women's facility.
Do I have a cycle?
I'll cycle it.
I have a motion and a cycle to rebid this project. Uh, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this, the original specs included an alternate, I mean, excuse me, an addendum to add this pump. So is some one on this panel gonna determine what the new specs will be? Will this be in? Will it be out?
Um, I, I think the architect would come down and review all specs with us and we would have to make a decision as to what specs are included in that bid.
So you're not gonna address this now? This one goes along with the, the new, the new bids in other words?
Well, I thought, my interpretation, we need to get with the architect and let's see what impact that's going to have on the total project.
All right.
And, and that may be an option.
Okay.
Or he may have another option that he could present to us and I would like, I would recommend the commission look at all options.
Let me, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is there some way we can be informed of all this stuff before we have to come in here to a meeting? I mean, can we have meetings with these people and understand what's going on? Or some of y'all meet with us and tell us what's going on?
Well.
Yeah.
Mr. North.
You talking about the grinder pump and stuff like that?
All of it.
Huh?
All of it. I come in here sometimes just blind, like a man stumbling through a dark room. Cause nobody's told me anything. I understand others get certain calls time to time, things are said, but I don't get no calls. Nobody calls me.
Uh, yeah, I got, I got an email on some of this, you know, of what was going on.
I didn't get an email. I didn't get an email. That's all right.
Well, I think we'll probably have to hold a workshop or something on, on face on discussion of the jail, um, for the, when the architect gets the new bid proposal out for us to review it and see what all been.
I'd also like to, I could make a comment too, that we might look at some of the other architects too, cause we weren't told the truth here before.
If I remember, Ms. Petty, you can, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the commission did take act, action to award the architectural services fee to this company.
Yes, that's correct, based on the recommendation of the committee.
And I believe everybody that is on the commission was there at that meeting, we can pull the record to see who, who voted for that and who voted against it. And normally what happens, you employ, you employ a, a architect to draw the plans and the specifications. He does that in conjunction with whoever's asking for that. If my recollection is correct, the commission appointed myself, the sheriff and Ms. Petty to work with the architect to get the plans and specification drawn up. And that's, y'all gave us that authority.
I agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
I'm aware of that, Chairman.
And I, I go along with that a hundred percent. When I had a committee in a church that I pointed them to investigate something, they'd come back and give me the details of it and what was going on, where I could be brought up to breast to what is happening. And that's what I'm asking. That's all I'm asking, is that I just be told what's going on.
Gentlemen, I would also like to, um, make you aware that I never met with the committee. I was busy with other issues. Correct, Mr. Godwin?
That's correct.
So Mr. Godwin and Sheriff Meeks basically met with the, the, um, architects, PH and J has been around a long time. Um, they're very, um, highly visible in county, uh, conferences, sheriff's conferences, your conferences. They sponsor, you know, things for events. So they're well known. Um, I had no reason, even though I wasn't on the committee, had no reason to think that they wouldn't be a good firm, um, after they, you know, we, y'all were told that's who the recommendation would be. There were just flawed specs, blatant flawed specifications. So that is, I think that's what y'all are alluding to, that we've got a delay in a very big project, uh, looming because the architect entered something in the specs that was not correct.
I think any of us should recognize that nobody's impalable. You, you will make mistakes as you do that. And, uh, also there was an opportunity to, there was a bid, a pre-bid conference held with all contractors who showed an interest in bidding this project. I made, I made that conference. Uh, Mr. North, were you there?
No, I wasn't there.
I think I was the only one that took the initiative to go to that to see if there was any problem. It did not come up that time. Then it was pointed out after the bids were open, there was a problem with one spec. And when that happened, I went back and reviewed the, uh, specs and found another one that was in similar, where nobody else had raised that objection. I took it upon myself as being responsible for this community, this commission and this county, that once that one problem presented itself, is to go back and review all the other specs to be sure that we did not have anything else so that we would not come back, possibly rebid it, then there'd be a show up again. Trying to correct all of the, uh, problem with that particular bid and the architect has talked with the building commission, our attorney has talked with the building commission, and this is how this all unfolded based on our counsel. And I think Ms. Moody was the one point person, was that right?
That's right.
And, um, uh, the Allbritton Farm is our attorney of record and most time Ms. Moody is here to do that, but when she's not, Mr. Allbritton is here to, uh, to, so give us legal counsel. And that's where it is. I, I think there was opportunities for every commission to review, to determine what information was there. There was emails sent out and, uh, I don't know what else to do other than that unless Mr. Termon, unless we go back to what we were doing originally, when we started this term, and that was having workshops about all these items so that everybody would hear what everybody else had to say. Without a workshop and because of open meetings law, we, we cannot get together, the five of us, or we'd be in violation of it. Now, we can do a workshop, but no action can be taken and you cannot indicate how you're going to vote on that matter when it comes up at the commission meeting. So there's been opportunities, is all I'm saying, to be informed and that's about, you know, I take my job seriously and I make sure that I inquire about different things so I can be informed to make a decision. And with that, so what, what I would suggest that we get with the architect, go over all the specs, we can have a workshop. Is that not correct, Ms. Petty?
Yes, yes.
Have a workshop with him. We'll go over every specification there is, but I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna, it's gonna cause you to have to spend some time. It's not gonna be a come and meet five minutes and go. It's gonna take some commitment to go through that, cause there's a pretty long list of stuff. We can do that and then we have had a motion to, to rebid the project. Get that and everybody's satisfied with the specifications, then we can, uh, advertise the project. Is that correct, Ms. Petty?
That's correct.
So that's sort of the timeline that you have, so, uh, I, Ms. Petty and myself, one will call the architect and set up a meeting or a workshop, if that's what, if that's, uh, does that address your concerns, Mr. Termon?
Yes, sir. If you read in paragraph five, I believe it is, it's a letter, this lady said she never was notified in the right perspective on this deal. And she, she recommends, and that's what I was, that's what I was going by, she recommends that we rebid this thing.
And that's what we did. I think we followed our counsel.
And I think, uh, okay, but I think from this on, we need to be informed. One, two, three, four, five of us here, you, you, you form a committee, that's fine. I don't, I don't, I go wrong with that because what you do is you go in there and you dig out what the particulars are and then you bring them back and you present it to us first of all. Have a workshop. Am I wrong?
Well, the committee did.
We, now that, you know, when we had our-
All I'm asking for is just information.
When we had our meeting the other day and Mr. Patrick, Mr. Rainey came and he discussed, he had spoken with Ms. Lynn and then Julie went and clarified some things. So there was some differences in understanding of what Mr. Jones and them had talked with her about and what Ms. Moody, and when they all got together, it was their decision to just reject the bids and do it over. Uh, there'd been some issues, just the wording, it was really simple wording, it, it caused the issues. It wasn't, uh, nothing that would be wrong, other than the fact the way it was written out. And so just for, for our sake and everybody else's, it was just best just to re, redo the bid.
We have, we have motion and cycle, correct, to re, reject the bid, have a-
That one's been handled. What you have on the floor right now is a, a motion and a second to rebid with its amended specs to be discussed prior to the advertising.
Any other discussion?
Make the adjustment, move on.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, there be a none, the motion carried unanimously. At this time, we will move into new business. First item is consider approval of the February the twelfth, two thousand fourteen meeting minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. We got to go to the corrected, um, agenda. And at this time, we will, uh, for the item for consideration is the lease of the Covington County Arena to Travel D Limited Liability Corporation. There be a none motion, we will move to the second item. Consider approval.
Chairman, can I interrupt you? I didn't, at this point in time, I needed to make a motion about the arena leasing the arena out. Is that, I was thinking it's gonna come earlier. Is that when I need to make this a motion right now? I know you're not wanting to work with us, but that's what I'm asking.
Well, Mr. Elbow, I cannot tell you what to do and what not to do. Uh-
Uh, at, at this time, Chairman, I'll make a motion that the commission received a letter from Mr. Don Bullard requesting that the, his lease agreement for the Covington Center Arena be extended for an additional five years. I move to extend the lease agreement with Travel D LLC in accordance with the Article Two of the original lease agreement.
Do I have a cycle?
Second.
Ms. Petty, would you mind, uh, elaborate on what those, um, commitments are for the, for that particular thing?
Sure. Was the second from Mr. Termon? Article two of the lease spells out the, um, terms of the, the rent for the continuation of the five-year period, that during the first year of the extension, um, the rent will be eleven hundred dollars per month. Second year, it goes to twelve hundred, third thirteen hundred, the fourth year, fourteen hundred and then fifteen hundred a month, um, in the fifth, in the fifth year. It will be increased at a rate of twelve hundred dollars per year. They've been, um, great to pay on time, never missed a payment. That's what the terms of the, of the extension of, if you go in, and that is, that is what I understand your motion is, to go back to the original lease, the article two that says it can be extended for an additional term.
I will just say this, that when Mr. Bullard did not exercise his option to renew the lease, the other people were interested in leasing the arena and, uh, I think it would be the best for this community if we did open this process back up to, uh, let other interested parties consent, to be considered in the leasing arena. Any other comments?
Excuse me, I would like to make a few comments. I do appreciate everybody coming. I really do. And five years ago, I was sitting where you were sitting and it looks different from up here. We did not and do not have the money in the budget to operate the facility. That's just cold hard facts. I will work with every one of you, with the city, the Kiwanis Foundation and whoever, and I'm sure all the other commissions will too, with economic development, with the Chamber of Commerce and whoever it takes to promote the facility, to get every event and every dollar we can. Uh, I've talked with Mr. and Ms. Bullard about it. Uh, they're willing to do whatever they can to do it. I know they've, um, been contacted by the Junior High School Rodeo Association. I think they're coming back, um, first week in June and I think High School will be here the following week. So we will pick up one more event and I think there'll be some more coming in the future. But I appreciate the work, all of you to, to help our community.
Can we ask a question? Um, what is the procedure? I'm just standing on here, it's like, what is the procedure for letting a bid on a county facility? Do you not have to open that bid up to the public and give them an opportunity to, to submit bids?
This is, actually, this may be a question directed to me. This is a lease, it doesn't have to be bid. Uh, the county commission retains the authority, because they declared it a surplus property, to lease it on whatever terms they feel are reasonable, uh, which is what they've done in the past, but this doesn't have to be bid.
So is it not even reasonable for the county to open it up for bids from other people?
Well, that's their call. Well, that's their call to make, but they don't have to, uh, bid this out.
But in the interest of what the community wants, would it not be better for them to open it up?
Well, that's a question for them, not for me, but it's not a legal requirement that they get.
Why can't you try to this until you have an opportunity to look at other avenues to help bring revenue back into this facility, instead of closing it off again for another five years? I mean, that's all we're asking, is for you to look at it, to go over it. I understand you don't have the money budgeted, but it's not a dead deal if you can get somebody else who will work with you better than what you've got now. I mean, I know you two gentlemen over here have acted like this has been an imposition for you all morning.
Ms. Wiggin, Ms. Wiggin, uh, let's do not get personal in our discussion.
I know, and I apologize for saying that, gentlemen, but it's just, you know, we have, uh, an interest in this. We're passionate about what we do here. It's not just, you know, a cut and dry deal to us.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggin.
May I say something?
Yes, I'll recognize Mr. Termon at this time.
I voted against leasing the arena. I was the only commissioner on the board that voted against it. I wanted to keep it in the county, but I got voted out. I got voted down. Over the years that we've had it leased, uh, we have been able to put money back in the budget for raises, for roads, and things of that nature. And we still, the arena still belonged to Covington County, it's just leased. Uh, if he fails on that lease, we take it back. And my understanding in talking with him, that he honors everybody that has a contract. Now, if I, if I'm, if I'm wrong, you know, the information that I received was wrong, well, I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I'm going by, right? The budget required us to pay a hundred and ninety to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for the arena that we didn't have. But I voted to keep it. But my dad says, when you, when you get along in life and you see where you've done wrong, you admit that you were wrong. I admitted I was wrong. We had to lease it, we didn't have no, we didn't have no choice. I mean, we could sit here and talk about it for thirty minutes or more, because we hashed it out and hashed it over and under and everything else back at that time. But county was, was, was terribly, terribly, terribly in debt. We was in the red big time, and we, there was at one point, we were, we were on the verge of being taken over by the state. So, we had to do things, we had to cut corners and do things to bring money back into the budget so the county could operate, so you could have a road to ride on. That's all.
Chairman, I'll, uh, at this time, I'll recognize Mr. Elmore.
Like to say, make a comment, though, I was here just like Commissioner Termon was, and it was a hard decision to make. I had three folks come to my house, talk to me about the arena, and, uh, they sat down in my den and we talked about it. They said, "We're on the outside looking in, and we don't see what's going on, we don't know the finance and situation." But whatever this, we'd like to see y'all not lease this arena out. Whatever the decision y'all make, we'll, 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 we'll honor y'all's decision, because y'all in charge, and we think y'all gonna make the right decision. It was a hard decision for me to make. We had to try to get a board of directors here. Somebody got out of, out of the state, come in here and try to help us, and when nobody stepped up, it failed. All we had, City of Annelusia, to step up. They wanted us to give them fifty thousand dollars a year, and that'd been five years, I'd been a quarter million dollars. Mr. Bullard stepped up, that, when he, he gonna give us money. So, you know, if I look at that, and Commissioner Termon just touched on it a minute ago, five, last five years, before Mr. Bullard leased this, uh, arena from the county, it cost us nearly eight hundred thousand dollars, ladies and gentlemen. I ain't talking about budget money, I'm talking about additional money. Eight hundred thousand dollars, seven eighty, something like that, additional money for what was already budgeted. And it was rounding us, and I'm, I'm sorry that y'all may be offended the way I voted. I, I can't hit, that's all I have, Chairman.
Could I, Mr. North, I'll recognize you at this time.
Could I say this? And Ms. Bullard, could she just say something? Has she got anything she'd like to add to this conversation?
Only thing I have to say is I can't make people come here, and there's several that were on that poster that I have never been contacted. I will have to say, there's several that were on the poster that, that Kim showed you that have never called or contacted me since I've had the arena, or Dawn and I. Um, Alabama Junior Rodeo Finals will be here the first weekend in June. The High School Rodeo Finals will be here the second weekend in June. So, as far as losing people, I don't feel that I have lost the people because they've never contacted me to come here, and MBHA being one of them. I haven't been directly contacted by MBHA for them to come here. I've had other people ask me, but as far as MBHA directly, never.
Right.
Y'all have any questions for me?
Tell them, what's your charges? What, if somebody wants it, what does it cost?
It's a thousand dollars a day, stalls are fifteen dollars, and the RV hookups are ten per day. Any more questions?
Thank you.
It is great.
Ms. James, do you wish to respond to Ms. Bullard's comments since Mr. North has opened up this avenue? I, I will take chair of priority, give you an opportunity to respond. You can come to-
Mr. Chairman?
It is great that, um, the Junior Rodeo is coming back here, and they are coming back here. Um, the secretary of the Junior Rodeo contacted me, they said they needed thirty-five hundred dollars to come to the arena. I personally helped them get thirty-five hundred dollars to come to the arena. Last year, I came here before the High School Rodeo, I think it was in March, to ask the county also to give ten thousand to the High School Rodeo kids to be here. So, they do have to, and we do know that the arena does have to be paid for. But at the same time, again, I'm kind of in the middle of this because of the association.
Ms. James, could I, could I interrupt you a minute?
Yes.
I need to declare a ten-minute recess, and then we'll come back to you.
Oh, sure.
At this time, I declare recess. Yes, you am.
Ten o'clock? Ah, it's been a while, though. Are you gonna come out of here? They want to build extensive size.
I'm just gonna bring that up as a point of order. So, you just need to amend your motion to state that, I think I'm right about that, though.
I'm like, I'm like saying? You need to, you need to look at this?
No, I'm, I'll look at it over here.
Okay.
Otherwise, the lease is fine.
Right. Fifteen hundred dollars, how is he gonna go with it? Even if you're her own idiot. I'm sure I'm gonna get it. Why can't we didn't vote on that one before we got down to the bidding? I kept looking at you.
Yeah, I'm better now.
But he, but he, he, but you perceive, he gonna jump down there, he's gonna move on to something more, right?
Why would you want to? It's a big question.
Oh, yeah, it's more fun now, it is, right?
Yeah.
All I do, all I do, do is hang in there, bro, that's all it is.
Only thing that I'm gonna tell them is that, uh, Mr. Elmore's motion was for an extension of the contract. Really needs, if you're gonna vote on it, a motion for a new contract. That's what Triple D, right? That's what his motion is, is with Triple D, right? That's right, he didn't exercise his option. I was gonna wait and bring that up after everybody said their piece.
Mr. Elmore out there? At, at this time, I'll, I'll call the meeting back to water. Ms. James, where's she go to? Is she in the hall? Is Ms. James in the hall? Ms. James, will you come back to the podium and continue with your presentation?
We interrupted you.
As I was saying, last year in March, I did come up here and asked for the county to give ten thousand dollars to the High School Rodeo Finals to come here, and which you did, and which they in return paid for the facility to have the facility. Again, um, as Renee is saying too, she has, they do work with the people, I know that they do. Um, the secretary and the vice president of the Junior Rodeo came to me probably two months ago and said they wanted to have the, have the rodeo here. Because I asked, why did the Alabama Junior High School Rodeo go to Pensacola, Pensacola, Florida to have their state finals? One is they didn't want to go to Montgomery because of the, where the facility sits in Montgomery is a bad neighborhood. They don't want to be in Montgomery. Um, they were in Troy, they don't want, there's not enough room in Troy, there's not enough stalls. They're, the, they've grown, they need more, they needed more room. I was contacted because I do know a lot of the people that's on that board also, and the same thing, they needed thirty-five hundred dollars to come here, how can we get it? I gave them a list of twenty names of community businesses in Covington County to go around and get sponsorship money, whether it was a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, or whatever. They asked me if I would do it. My child is thirty years old, my grandchild is four. I don't have a Junior High School Rodeo, I do it because I own that business. I do it because I want people to come. I got out and helped get money, I personally helped get sponsorship money for the Junior High School Rodeo. I have no connections to that, other than my business. So, again, everybody who does participate, and everybody that does give money and does help, it's greatly appreciated to all of them. Again, it is great that the Junior Rodeo is coming back to Alabama instead of Florida. Um, I hope that our four Hers in Covington County don't have to go to Florida, that they can stay in our community and stay in our county. We can only hope at this point in time, I think, and with the good Lord willing, maybe the individuals will help and consider working with whomever does come in to come to the facility, and will help everybody. And again, we're gonna come back and ask the county again to give ten thousand dollars to the High School Rodeo.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Uh, I'll just respond to the figures that were thrown out about what it costs the county. The bond payment and the interest payments is going to be, uh, paid by the county regardless whoever managed that arena. I don't think, when the arena came in as an idea to be built, I sat on that committee, and the idea was to provide a service to the ag community. It was not envisioned that the direct revenues and direct expenses, there would be more money left to pay for the facility. The facility was to be paid for by the county as a service here. So, when you go back and just, and just count the direct revenue and direct expenses, it will not equal what Mr. Elmore has stated. So, with that, um, is it any of the, uh, members of the commission wish to make a comment?
I'd like to make a comment this time, Chairman, to what you just said. You can go in there, Ms. Petty, and put it on the book, what the, we had to add to that, when I mentioned seven hundred something thousand dollars, it, it, that's, that's, that's facts.
That doesn't include the debt payment.
That's right.
The debt payment is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, and the subsidies for the arena for the five years prior to the lease, subsidies out of the general fund were seven hundred and eighty something thousand dollars. Besides the money that was generated at the arena through events, the general fund subsidized it that much.
Do you know how much tax revenue was generated during those five years?
Uh, I don't, I didn't look that up.
Would that be, that, with that consideration?
Most of, I thought that most of the equine shows brought their own arran, uh, living arrangements. I mean, I didn't know that, do they rent hotel rooms?
Of course.
That's fine, I don't want to get into discussion about it. The money was spent, uh, y'all can see the records if you'd like.
We, uh, as a consultant with the attorney, uh, we are not permitted to renew a lease that has ended, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Albright to respond to that motion now.
Yeah, it was just really more of a point of order about the way the motion was worded. It, it, Mr. Elmore, it really needs to, uh, be worded that what you're seeking is a motion to approve a new contract with Triple D on the terms that's contained in Section Two of the original lease. That's more accurately stating what's, what's happening here.
I have a question, Mr. Elmore. Is the provision there that if we do a new contract, is it gonna have a provision to renew it another five years to make it a ten-year?
No, sir, not this time, Chairman.
So, we need to make sure that that provision, as I understand it, you, you're, you need to withdraw your original motion, whoever second needs to.
Think you can just move to amend your motion stated in the new way, get another second?
Just move to amend the motion to, for it to include the five years at the rates that are stated, and that's the only provision that needs to be in that, other, nothing about a renewal.
No.
Nothing about a renewal, is that correct, is that what you-
I'd be fine, I'll make that a motion.
Well, you make a motion to amend your-
I'll make a motion to amend it, the words, that Mr. Bullard's contract be for five years from here on, new contract.
On the same terms as contained in Section Two of the original lease?
Additional lease.
With no provision for renewal.
Right, right.
Did y'all get that?
Y'all understand that now?
Do I have a second?
I got it.
Do I have a second, do I have a second on the amendment? Do I have a second, do I have a second on the amendment?
I'll second that.
All, first, we will need to vote on the amendment, and then we will vote on the motion with the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. All opposed, nay. Now, we'll call for a vote on the motion with the amended version, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried. With that, I know the meeting is running a little long today, and if anybody has some other commitments they need to get to, you're free, feel free to leave, but we would love to, you stay if you could. At this time, we would consider the approval of the February the twelfth, two thousand fourteen meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
I have a motion for approval. Mr. Elmore second.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion.
Mr. Termer, Mr. Termer. I have a motion to approve the minutes for February the twelfth, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Elmore second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item, approval of February two thousand fourteen counts payable and payroll amounts.
I'll make a motion, we approve the counts payable and payroll. I second him.
Mr. Barton move, Mr. Norris second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item of business is consider a resolution for people against littered state, which is pals. And Ms. Jan White is here to talk for this resolution, and this time I will recognize her.
It's my privilege to be here today, and I know my cohort in cleaning up litter, Janice Castleberry, had desired to be here today, but she's under the weather, so usually she comes and speaks and preaches and I turn the pages. But I'm here for her soapbox today, she would tell all of us, clean up, and that's what I have today is a banner that says, don't drop it on Covington County, and let's clean up our communities, our roadsides. We recently had some guests here from Texas, and I literally apologized driving up Twenty-Nine North, the litter was that bad. I know Janice would say it's neighbor to neighbor, there are trash bags provided by pals, state pals, people against littered state that are at the Chamber of Commerce. If your group wants to have a cleanup on your roadsides, or adopt a mile, or adopt a stream, there's all kinds of information there at the Chamber for that. We do wanna specify the month of March or April, whenever people can get out before the snakes get out and start cleaning up the roadsides, and we will provide bags. We wanted to get a picture today, if you guys will come forward and hold this banner that's reminding people not to drop it on Covington County.
Who's gonna make the first move? We'll do that so that she can, um.
We think that we need to get the, all the groups, volunteer fire departments, boy scouts, girl scouts, all the communities involved.
On camera.
On camera.
Uh-oh, I can't sit here and look disinterested.
Better than that challenge player, clean up.
Clean up, yeah. What is this, uh, Mark Bullock?
Mark Bullock, yeah. I always say Mark Wilder, but it's Mark Bullock.
I'm not used to walking.
You gonna be alright for a walk?
I think so.
We did do a drug test.
He wanting anything out there, he's dumbing.
There's a, there's a resolution number fourteen oh three twelve oh one in your packet proclaiming the week of April nineteenth and twenties, through the twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. What's the pleasure of the commission in proclaiming this week as such?
I make a motion, make it the week of.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norris, second by Mr. Elmore, that we adopt this resolution proclaiming. You got a question, Ms. Petty?
That was Mr. Termer.
Mr. Termer, second.
That's alright, Chairman, we all do that.
Proclaiming the week of April nineteenth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, uh, as a cleanup week. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we are considering requesting bids for a mandatory solid waste disposal service. And at this time, I'm gonna call on Mr. Cassidy to come, they currently hold the contract, but there's some issues he would like for us to be aware of before we elect to rebid the contract.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning, Rory Cassidy with Public Services Allied Waste. It was with a heavy heart that I delivered a letter to Ms. Petty, uh, in a timely manner, informing her that we would not be able to renew the contract with the current provisions in the contract. In Alabama, and I'm a garbage man, I'm an attorney, so you might get clarification from your attorney, you can't modify a, a contract. The Consumer Price Index for garbage and trash collection has gone up over thirty percent in the last fifteen years, where the Consumer Price Index, which is what our contract is based on, has gone up about fifteen percent. If we would've implemented the CPI for next year, the rate would've been a little bit over fifteen dollars, fifteen twenty-five, a little over fifteen twenty-five per resident per month. In Covington County, we service almost six thousand customers. Of those, we have four hundred, a little over four hundred that are social security exempt through the state statutes. The county health department does a great job in managing that, but it's supposed to be managed before the first invoice goes out. So, that's one thing that I talked to Ms. Petty about is to, let's sharpen that up a little bit. People can't just go in and say, I get social security, so I'm exempt from garbage service. They have to prove that social security is their only source of income. The biggest problem we have is the people that don't pay. Last year, the end of the year, we had over seven hundred that had not paid us. So, the garbage driver, our number one initiative is safety. So, the garbage drivers out there, he sees a cart, he's gonna collect the cart. If somebody has not paid for garbage service, and let me give you the priority on paying your garbage service, you need a basement. You know, you're gonna have a cell phone, uh, car payment, electricity, mortgage. The garbage gets shuffled on a regular basis, so we spend a lot of time calling and letting the customers know that they need to pay their quarterly bill. If they don't pay us, here's our options to stop service, they'll, most of them will call. If they refuse to call, we do have to notify the county health department, and we pick up their cart. Now, the sheriff, if you steal something from a store that's worth seventy dollars, you're gonna get arrested. If you, if you borrow your garbage, your, your neighbor's cart, cause they're on vacation, if, if the cart's out there, the driver is gonna pick it up. And so, it has become an issue with us trying to get paid on a regular basis. Again, a million dollar contract, we appreciate the partnership that we've had over twenty years with the county, but if you're not making money on your million dollar contract, then you're going backwards, and that's the situation I was forced with working with the controllers and operations, is trying to figure out how we can renew the contract. Our only option was to not renew the contract and respond to a request for proposals. I provided a, a draft for Ms. Petty to review with y'all to put different options in there. The Alabama League of Counties, Association of Counties, also has a draft contract that they provide, I believe, at no cost to member counties of what you are. But I will tell you, the recent bid history with counties that have a billing mechanism, whether it's an ad valorem, I'm sorry, a non-ad valorem tax, or some type of sales tax, the, the rates are lower than a hundred and twenty dollars a year, which right now, we were a little over a hundred and eighty dollars a year per resident, and we were not making money. Now, I know the billing mechanism is, is going to be a tough sell until you start looking at the savings that citizens would have if it's a non-ad valorem tax where they're paying the county, they're not gonna pay us. They pay the county, and then the county would pay us, so that all we have to do is coordinate with the county, how many customers are out there, if somebody moves in, we add one, somebody moves out, we take one off, and we can do that monthly. And it's a, a lot neater system to have, but I do wanna tell you and emphasize, we appreciate the relationship we have with Covington County. We employ over thirty people here, ten thousand gallons a week in fuel, tires, um, we love Covington County. Unfortunately, it was not economically feasible for us to continue under the current terms of the contract.
I believe your purpose here today is to just to inform us as to what some problems are associated with whoever may have the, the new bid.
That's correct, and this is a.
Whoever, is not, you're not speaking for you, your company, you're speaking for all, that this is some of the issues that we will have to address in a new contract.
That's correct, and Commissioner, if you, if you say absolutely not, we don't wanna have anything to do with the billing, again, that will be factored in the rate that we provide, but if you look at Dale County and Coffee County, they're lower than eleven dollars with them providing the billing. Crenshaw County just received proposals, the county administrator up there was not pleased at all with the service, and, and he said, every call I get, he says, I'm gonna start answering garbage, cause that's the calls I get are all about garbage. They received proposals and renewed with the current provider at over seventeen dollars a month for garbage collection with that garbage company providing the billing. So, again, there are mechanisms in place, Washington County, now Washington County also includes all the commercial customers, but it's less populated than Covington County, there's not a whole lot of commercial customers there. The industries, which there are a lot of industries, are not included in that contract, but we just started that contract at ten sixteen a home, again, with the county paying us instead of us having to individually bill. So, and I will tell you, when you have a pre-proposal meeting, you're probably gonna have seven or eight companies in here from throughout the United States. The garbage industry is very attractive to investors. Our return on investment is not as great as some industries, but our cash flow is very nice. So, investors look at that and say, okay, this is a good industry to be in. So, you have startup companies, you have companies like ours that have been around for thirty years, but you will have a roomful of people in here that are interested in providing residential garbage collection for the citizens of Covington County. Again, we appreciate the relationship and the partnership that we have with the county.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments as to, from your side of the, uh, contract, what some of the problems are, and, and at this time, we would need to take, have a motion to, um, request bids or proposals, Ms. Petty?
Yes, yes, bids.
And whereas our contract's going to end?
It's May, I believe.
June first is when the new contract would start, yes, sir.
June first, so, you know, it's imperative that we get bids out and get, so we can possibly approve this no later than the May, May thing. Thank you, unless any of the commissioners have a question for you?
Thank you, sir.
Again, we appreciate the partnership and hope, hopefully we're selected to continue providing the service.
Well, I understand, you, you got to leave for something else, and, and we do appreciate you taking time out to inform, inform us of the problems associated with the pickup.
Thank you, Chairman, and Ms. Petty knows how to get ahold of me, even on Saturdays.
Even on Saturdays, that's right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So, with the contract ending the thirtieth of May, we need to take action to request bids for.
I make a motion, we, uh, solicit bids for the garbage waste pickup.
Second, Chairman.
Got a second, we have a motion and a second to solicit bids for mandatory solid waste disposal service. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. Number five is consider extension of the Southern Health Partners Agreement. This came up because of our contracts to house, um, municipal inmates. Their contract ends at a different date than this does, and, and talk with Ms. Petty, because the cost with the jail is so closely tied to this contract. She's recommending that we extend their contract so it coincides with the ending dates of the municipalities. Ms. Petty, you got anything else?
I have received the, the, uh, extension, the terms are exactly the same, it extends it through September thirtieth. They're probably, based on their letter, they're probably gonna request a two percent increase at October first, unless you deem to do something different. They did not increase their fees last year, so it's, two thousand twelve was the last increase they had.
So, right now, I, I, what we need to do is take actions to renew it, and then when we get within the timeframe,
Within the timeframe decides.
Then we will either renew or solicit bids, either way. So, we had a motion and a second to, to extend that agreement to September the thirtieth, all in favor, say aye.
Wait a minute.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we extend these, this bid out till September third.
Emma was my second.
Right here, we'll get it. Okay, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item, this is an annual thing, consider the two thousand fifteen ABC Board License Schedule. Ms. Petty, is that schedule, are we at the maximum?
Um, you are on everything that has a maximum fee, um, except for, see, we don't have an importer or a brief hub, so those really don't matter, probably don't even, I don't know about a warehouse, but the county fees for the ones that, uh, have a cap are at the max. Some of those, I guess, don't have a max, that you could go up as high as you wanted to. But just these certain ones, you can't go any higher than, than that fee.
Do you know which ones are capped and which ones are not?
The, um, the page that's, from the, the letter, I believe, all of those, with the exception maybe of the, the, um, no, I think, I think even the brief hub, I think all of the ones that are listed here are at the maximum.
Yeah, and I notice there's increases in just about every category.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt this maximum fee as presented on this schedule?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Barton move, Mr. Norris second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. Next is consider purchase of the advertisement and pilot club horse show program. If we approve this, it has to come out of the contingency. We got two, we got a contingency and we got a contingent, it's two different things, so contingency fund if you approve it. And I believe the last I saw, there was a balance of eight thousand or so in that account. So, uh, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I make a motion, we, uh, purchase this for the pilot club for the horse show.
And that's a seventy-five dollar.
At the seventy-five dollars.
We got two second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Elmore second, okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, consider funding requests for Covington County four H Midnight Riders. This was alluded to in the former discussion, um, if we do not provide funding, they will be going to bake up water to hold. If we do not provide funding, they will be going to bake up water to hold that event. So what's the pleasure of the board?
It's what in writing right here, that's what they're requesting, they're writing a thousand dollars. I make a motion, give them a thousand dollars donation.
I second it. So we need, you made the motion, right?
Have a motion and a second to honor their request for a thousand dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, consider donation of South Central Alabama Mental Health Communities Carrying two thousand fourteen-
Let me back up, Tom.
Yes, sir.
That thousand dollars, it come out of our contingency fund?
You have to.
You don't have to, it's a rec, well, yeah, I guess you better put it down there.
We need to clarify that.
Clarify that, you're right, that's a better idea. Okay, I got it.
Comes out of contingency, okay. Okay, item number nine, that's the donation to the South Central Alabama Mental Health. Ms. Petty, you're involved with that, are you not?
I would like to speak to this, if you don't mind. Of course, just like almost all governmental agencies, mental health is being drastically underfunded, funding cuts, and so your local South Central Help Board here has basically a new, I say relatively new director, and she has really launched all these fundraisers to try to, you know, build up the operating funds down there. The event is called the Communities Carrying two thousand fourteen. It's basically a silent auction of barbecue plates, and Shane Owens is supposed to be there, he's performing free, somebody might know who he is. Anyway, because I feel like it's a very worthy cause, and the Mental Health Center helps us a lot with, even with our inmates over at the jail, I'd like to request a thousand dollars be donated to this effort, and it can be paid out of the general fund under the line item contingency that he's, the other thing he's referring to. It is a general fund legal expense.
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that.
Yeah.
I'll see some of this stuff, still baffled me.
Do we have a motion that we sponsor this event at the one thousand dollar?
I'll so move, Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Next item is discuss a letter from Trey Burgess from op regarding the purchase of the old jail. As you know, I had discussed with y'all before, he had mentioned that he was interested in it to purchase it, refurbish it, and use it for office space, and maintain the historical integrity of it. So I asked him to write a letter, and that's the letter you see here, repurposed to the attorney. I assume we could enter the negotiation with him for that purchase?
Well, first of all, you do own it, right?
Yes, yes.
And it's not been declared surplus?
No, no.
Okay. You know, before you did anything, you'd have to declare a surplus. That doesn't prohibit you, he's kind of finding out what he's interested in. I think before you officially do anything, you'd have to declare a surplus and you would sell it, but, and he may have more definition than what it provides, I don't know, but...
No, this is it.
I would, I would make a motion that we at least discuss it with him to see what the options are and what kind of money is involved before we declare it surplus, just to, I mean-
Could we do, could we do that without declaring it surplus? Could we explore that avenue without, or do we have to?
Yeah, sure you can, you just can't, you can't sell it to him without declaring surplus.
I'd like to find out more about it.
I would give him, he could come and present what he wants to do and his ideas on it.
Right, there's nothing wrong with any of you individually talking to him about what he's interested in. In fact, I think it's what you should do.
Should we just table this, or should we just, do we have to make a motion for this?
No, there's no action that's really required.
No action.
You can just put that as an item that you want to address in the future and just have seen what he's interested in, and the fact that you're talking to him may make other people interested in it, too, you might get a better deal, might get a better offer, so...
Great.
Thank you. There's one thing for sure, it's not being utilized now, and it's basically an eyesore, but I do know the historical society are very interested in maintaining that architect on the outside, and if we did decide to sell it to them, we could put that as a restriction that he maintain that architectural integrity.
Well, you know, there are some restrictions that the state and other authorities put on what you can do with historical buildings. All of that would have to be explored, but at this point, I think you just need to find out what he's willing to do with it, and what others might be willing to do with it.
Right. Well, Mr. Burgess is located in op, he's an attorney, and I'm sure he's listed in phone book, if any of y'all wish to discuss this matter with him. I probably will see him today at Rotary Club in op, I'm a member over there, and he is too, and I will just tell him, with y'all's permission, that he either contact y'all individually, or y'all will contact him to discuss this further and try to get some kind of, I would say, concrete plans for it.
Just remember, you can't meet as a group and talk to him.
No, I'm just talking to him.
Or in a quorum and talk to him.
I was talking about individually.
I'm gonna meet exactly.
Mr. Elmore?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Next, we got to consider March Board Appointments. There are three vacancies, I mean, there's two that's up for reappointment, their term is in, and that's Mr. Eddie Stacy and Mr. Wayne Bush. There is a vacancy as weight, as the policy is written, reserved to the manager of the arena, and we do not have that. If we wish someone else to serve in that capacity, we would have to amend the policy. But you do have three people who have applied to, for the two positions that's open, so, and you have those in front of you, Mr. Wayne Bush, Mr. Eddie Stacy, and Ms. Lynn Hall. You got three, so...
Dr. Lynn.
Well, according, on this, it's just Lynn Hall.
The two that are presently serving, wish to continue to serve, and the vacancy, is that not what I'm reading?
What you have, when the Rec Board was established back in two thousand two, there was, it named specific positions, I guess you call them, the presidents of the Little League, Girl Softball, and Bay Ruth Leagues, and the manager of the Covington Center Arena, which no longer exists. So just ever since that, you know, two thousand nine, when the lease was executed with Travel D, that's just kind of set vacant. If you would like to amend this policy to say, a member of the agricultural community, or just make it three members at large, because Eddie Stacy and Wayne Bush serve at large, that was the other two.
Let me ask a question to the attorney. Since we have not published this possibly change in the policy, do we need to announce that we're taking that under consideration and doing it at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I mean, is there any compelling reason to do it right now?
I'd do that.
Then, yeah. I don't know that that's a legal reason, but it certainly seems unfair.
Let anybody be aware.
And make sure everybody know, make sure everybody knows what's going on.
So we need to table this?
So we can, we can do the two at large appointments at this time.
Well, I would make a motion that we accept Wayne Bush and Eddie Stacy as to continue their serving on the board at this time.
Suck it, that quick. Chairman, I'll suck it.
Who had a question?
I second, Mr. Barton's motion.
And these are two-year terms, is that correct?
They were the two that responded.
Yeah, they're the only ones, yeah.
So we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Bush and Ms. Stacy to the two at large position for two-year terms.
Right.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. For old business, for next meeting, we'll have the policy review if we want to do it. The next item is announce upcoming board appointments. Okay. The first one we need to discuss is the South Alabama Regional Council on Aging. We have five appointments, we got two threes on there, you notice that?
Two what?
It says, one, two, three, three, four.
Oh, woo!
We'll correct that.
We'll fix that, yeah.
Just to remind you-
I told you, we're all human.
All human, that's right.
Just to remind you, two of these must be elected officials in the county. They can be either county officials or city officials. I do know that Mr. Davey Lindsay is no longer on the op council, is that correct, Mr. Norris?
Right.
So we know, we need to look at that. Mr. Robert Williamson, I don't know, you know, I don't know if all of you know that he has cancer and is taking treatments, whether or not he wished to continue or maybe name somebody else consideration. I'll be glad, Mr. Elmore, contact him and say who you might would like.
I'll do that, Chairman.
And we don't need to overlook all the other municipalities as a possibility of somebody serving on here. And then you've got Ms. Petty and Mr. Randy Wall, who used to work for, still working for the Social Security Minister.
I think he is.
And then Ms. Virginia Merritt, who's one of our regisaw, that's who we have, so they'll be coming up next month. The next one is the Southeast Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission, and we have one coming up at this time. In fact, his term will expire on the fourteenth of this month, but we can't take action until the next meeting unless we have a suspension of the rules and all members are in favor. Isn't that correct? You can add an item.
You can amend your, well, I guess to add this as an action item, if you wanted to.
It'd probably be cleaner just to wait till the next month.
I don't think it'll hurt to wait, I mean, you've got this other group.
There is a meeting tomorrow over there, and he will be able to attend.
He can go, yeah.
And there won't be another meeting for three months, so we'll have time. So that's, that's who's there. At the last meeting, Mr., all the members were at the last quarterly meeting over there.
Wow, that's awesome.
All five. I've been, I asked Mr. Glover, Mr. Mount, and Mr. Davis to ride with me, and, you know, I'm going, so, you know, Mr. Mount did, but Mr. Davis had something else going on that day, and Mr. Glover had a ballgame to go to, to chase the city after the meeting, so I didn't want to go to the ballgame. So, but anyway, that's what's coming up next month. The next item is consider declaration of surplus technology items and approved disposal method. I'll send you, Johnny on the spot, Ms. Kennedy.
Just briefly, y'all got a, I typed a description, I think Ms. Pam put it in your packet. These are items that we have accumulated over the past roughly year, probably. I've spoke with the department heads, as well as our IT department, Mr. John Donaldson. All this stuff is surplus, we have no use for it, it's been replaced by a new one, it's computer equipment, printers, faxes, some scans, scanners from the probate judge's office, some radios from cats that they've upgraded, and that's, and you've got a list of it in front of you. And I would recommend it be sold on govdeals.com, that's what we usually do, it works out really well. I itemize this stuff, take pictures of it, I email it to KIP, and KIP takes care of it from there, and it's just real clean, easy way to do it, it's the only really fair way to do it. Everybody in the, has an opportunity to bid on it, you know.
That's, that's a recommended way of disposal.
It is.
I'd just like to make a comment that after six months, if this is not bought on this site that we dispose through the junkyard.
It's better.
Junk.
It's more plastic, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure we could do that, they have some stipulations on these computer equipment stuff, they don't, they don't want you to throw them in the trash. We'd have to, I'd have to do some research to find out what legally, they don't want you to put them in a hobo, they actually have had some recyclable places you could take them before, some events that you could take your old printers and computers to, because they don't want the things that a computer and printers and stuff are made of in the regular garbage. So it always sells on govdeals.com, because we'll put the starting price at a surplus amount of five dollars, and it always sells.
Usually, there's a disposal fee for any kind of stuff like that, and it's pretty high.
That's right, that's right. But I don't think that'd be a problem, it's, everything we've put on there, on govdeals, has sold.
I do know Ms. Janet Walford, who's head of the Choppey Clean Water thing, will be having a, she's been having every year a collection for these type of items, and she uses it in her cleanup of the rivers and all, and then a company automobile she sends, that she sells.
Well, I would definitely-
So you may, you may want to talk with her.
I would definitely agree, if it didn't sell, to less looking for another measure of disposal.
How you want to do it.
Coffee County, I am feeling this is a waterproof for electronics. Just to catch a look at the water.
Okay. Okay, do I?
I'll make a motion, we consider selling these surplus items on govdeals.
I second.
The motion is declare all these items surplus and to place them on gov.deals for disposal, sale. All in favors, do I have a, I got a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. Okay, the next item is consider agreement for personnel notification system, call them all. I will preface this by saying, when we had the ice storm, we did not have a way of contacting all of our employees unless we called each one individually. I had, my daughter-in-law works for the Plutton Home School, and they have a notification system, they can either call all their personnel, or call a select group of their personnel, without having to make individual calls, which that would save time. And this had nothing to do about emergency notification. It strictly had to do to look for a better way to contact our people. Mr. Capes has got something he thinks he's going to need, all his people, then decides later he does not, and it's a weekend, he can notify them not to come in, without having to call them all individually. So Ms. Petty may want to expand on this some?
I'd like to let John Donaldson, if you don't mind, because he was the one that did the research on, starting out with, I think, one call or something, and ended up with this.
Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, the service, what it does is, it's a web-based application where you can go and record a message and play it to one person, or you can play it to three hundred people, or you can put people in groups, and you can put it to certain groups, like road department, like you were saying, or to Kevin's department, or the probate office, you can send the message to them, however you want to do it. It's built on a monthly basis, you can, it's only like seventy-five dollars a month for up to three hundred people, and you can send text messages in that as well, you can use it as many times as you want for that seventy-five dollars a month. The other services cost up to three thousand dollars a month to do the same thing, but, I mean, a year, I'm sorry, not a month, a year. This one is seventy-five dollars a month to do what the other companies do. This particular company, Colomall, has clientele such as Disney, Ford, Aflac, they have big companies like that that use their service, and I've read their responses, and they're all very happy with the service that this company provides.
Are you recommending that we do this?
Yes, sir. I mean, it's a great way to, to tell people things, and like I said, Mr. Darren could notify his people, hey, you don't have to go there now, or hey, I do need you there, or y'all could simply- Or, hey, I do need you there. Or y'all could simply say, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, you know, through the system or, or however you want to do it. And you could use it, uh, as many times as you want.
Ms. Petty, I believe you have some uses for it too.
Oh, good grief, yes. Wellness clinic. Remind everybody of the wellness clinic. Remind them of open enrollment.
I could use it personally. We're telling people, hey, leave your computers on tonight. I'm gonna be updating them, you know, uh.
Yeah.
And for si- stuff like that, that, that would really help with that, rather than having to call everybody.
Well, if we had a payroll problem, like a, of something to delay, that'd be a nice way to let everybody know. Don't start spending your paycheck, cause it's not going in till tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's just more, more efficient way of notification.
It, it's really efficient way of notification. And like I said, the, the, it's been tried by really big companies and small companies too. And the big companies just, uh, say that there, it's the best thing they've ever used to notify their staff.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
I also, um, after the ice storm, was talking with Brenda, and yes, we need something like this very bad. And have been talking to several companies about this. We at the present time have a company, it's called Baron Services. It's a system that we use through EMA. Um, probably three or four weeks ago, they sent me an email saying that they're gonna update it so we can do notifications. Uh, Thursday, they told me that it isn't in service. And I met with, uh, Steve Terman, which is the, um, kind of operator for our area. Saturday, he was here at the expo and he is supposed to be getting with me in the next couple of days to let me know what that system would do for us. It will notify, it won't do voice though, but it will do text or emails. And it is a notification system like you're talking. And it's free. I mean, we have the system already. So just, if you can give us a couple of weeks to find out details on that, um, we might can save the county some money.
Well, I know from experience with, with the school system, the voice message, because a lot of people do not have the computers and this.
Well, a lot of phones don't allow text messages.
Right, the home phones, yes.
Yeah.
And this is just text or email.
We talking about the people who is going to receive the message, may not have that phone to take a text message.
Yeah.
And, uh, we have a lot of people that have not, um, become very versed in the texting and they, and I'm one of them.
Hello.
I knew you was gonna say that.
Hello.
And so.
Don't feel bad, I'll talk to you.
And that, that's why I was interested in getting the voice message because of the clientele of which we'll be contacting.
And, and that's fine. I just wanted you to know that this was coming available in the next couple of weeks. That we'll actually already have the computer and the system here that we can do text and email.
Thank you, ma'am.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Let me ask you this, what?
We got a, a question from the, uh.
What, the agree- uh, the agenda says consider agreement for personnel notification system, regards to whether you need it or not. What is the agreement? What are you agreeing to?
Well, it's just to actually, another choice of our agreement, is just to start using this service. It's a bill monthly. It's not a long-term.
Terms of it? I mean, what are the terms of the?
Seventy-five dollars a month for three hundred.
Contract.
It's not really a contract or anything. I've.
And I'm not stating an opinion. I'm just.
You're, you're right. That's a good point. Um, it's just to, to join, I guess you just join onto this and use it as needed. Isn't that right?
That's correct. I should have went over that. You, you don't have any contracts or anything like that.
A service just like electricity or phones or like that.
So if we wanted it for a month, then we decided we didn't like it, we just quit.
Yes, with this company you can. The other companies, the big ones, they make you tie in for a year. This company doesn't.
There you go. That's what I need.
Okay. Well, I think it'd be a great system. Um, I know it works for the county school system. Great. And, um, well, so, what's the pleasure of the, of the commission? Do I have a motion that we, um.
Enter this agreement? Start using this thing?
Yes.
I make a motion we entered into an agreement to use this, Callamal.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mister Barton second. Any other questions? All, discussions, questions? That's usually what.
I want to apologize to anybody that might have got confused besides myself because of the terminology and, uh, miscommunication involved with any of this. I was just trying to find out what it was. Why we need it, but I agree with you. This is definitely something we need.
This is something we need.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll go down to comments from the board.
You missed one.
Skipping.
Sixteen, we all, oh, yeah, fifteen. Sorry, we moved back up to fifteen. Been a request to, to install time clocks in the revenue commissioner's office at the courthouse and mapping and appraisal here in this building. Yeah, Ms. Hart requested that.
I'll make a motion to honor her request.
I'll second.
With time clocks and then, then, uh, mapping and appraisal.
All in, all in favor of install, installation of time clocks in these two areas of the county say aye.
Uh-huh.
All opposed nay. Mister Donaldson, you can move forward. He's a IT person. Comments from the board at this time? Any comments?
I'll make the motion adjourned, Chairman.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, excuse me. We got Mister Capps. I need to call on Mister Capps and Mister Albritton and any other department head that would like to speak.
I better draw my motion, Chairman.
I don't have any comments, sir.
I have one, please. I want to commend Kevin and his staff for completing this work out here. I, I think they did an awesome job at certain part of the place.
I like everything that the trip has on the.
Well, you get, Joe, you can't walk on it, but anyway, I just want to commend him.
Kick your feet up, Joe, like you going through the, I'm not saying. Uh, Mister Kenny, you got anything else? Mister Donaldson, do you have anything else? Ms. Harris, do you have anything? Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
What about me?
He said he did.
No, I'm not.
I'm through.
He's through. Uh, entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Chairman.
We got a motion, all in favor, say aye. Stand.
I tell you this, it's the only time I know of that people have asked me if I wanted to say more. I ain't gonna lose no sleep.